Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Series City Council for Monday, July tenth, two thousand seventeen. At this time can we have the roll call please?
Councilmember DeRocset.
Here.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Vice Mayor Klein is absent. Councilmember Rhino.
Here.
And Mayor Viera.
Here. Next we will have the invocation by Pastor Nathan Haley for the Victory Assembly of God, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to gather once again to discuss important issues. I pray that your hand of guidance and wisdom would be upon us this evening and ultimately that we will continue to walk in peace and prosperity here in the city. In Jesus' name.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands its foundation under God in the individual liberty of all.
Thank you Pastor. This evening we have one presentation, a proclamation declaring July National Parks and Recreation Month. So I do have a proclamation, I'll go ahead and read this here first. Proclamation declaring July two thousand seventeen as National Parks and Recreation Month, where as parks and recreation programs make lives and communities better now and in the future, and ninety-eight percent of California households indicated they visited a local park at least once a month in the past year, most often visiting a park with family and friends. And parks preserve and protect the historic, natural, and cultural resources in our community. And recreation programs foster human development and provide positive alternatives for children and youth during non-school hours to reduce crime and mischief, thereby helping children and youth develop and grow into healthy, productive adults. And recreation programs offer places and spaces and programs to facilitate social connections, human development, therapy, the arts, and lifelong learning. And recreation programs provide opportunities for direct and self-directed activities which encourage healthy movement. And thousands of children, adults, and seniors benefit from the wide range of services, facilities, and programs provided by the City of Series. And whereas the City of Series urges all its residents to recognize that parks and recreation programs enrich the lives of its residents and visitors, as well as adding value to the communities, homes, and neighborhoods. Now therefore I, Chris Viera, Mayor of the City of Series, do hereby proclaim July two thousand seventeen as National Parks and Recreation Month and urge all citizens to use and enjoy our parks and recreational opportunities. Proclaim this tenth day of July two thousand seventeen.
Okay. Okay, so Cambria and I will be presenting to you this evening on the benefits of outdoor nature to our children and our community. But first I wanted to say a quick thank you to my recreation team. We had our first camp out this past weekend at the Series River Bluff Regional Park. We had fifty-five people participate, eleven families came out, several of whom have never camped before. We received donations and help from the Series Lions Club. Thank you so much. You guys provided all the food. The Lions Club provided all the food for our families for dinner as well as breakfast. The Rotary Club gave us a donation and we were able to purchase five hundred dollars worth of camping supplies. So we had three tents out there, tarp's, two lanterns, so all three tents were utilized by families who did not have tents and were able to camp for the first time. We also had help from our Public Works Department getting us ready. We had a fire pit out there, we roasted s'mores with families. So our Public Works Department, we owe them a big thanks. And we had our one and only team volunteer, Brian, was out there helping us put on some games and activities for the various kids. But I'd like to introduce my team. We have Cambria Pollinger, she's our recreation supervisor for the City of Series. We have Crystal Aguilar, she's our recreation coordinator for the City of Series. And we have Angela, who does this, she's our recreation specialist for the City of Series. And so Crystal actually has never camped before, so she is one of the people who was out there this past weekend who's never had an opportunity to camp. So I wanted to give her just a minute to share about her experiences and then I wanted to give Cambria and Angela an opportunity to share about their favorite ways to recreate.
Yeah, so although I've been hiking many times, I've never actually stayed overnight, slept here outside. And I was a little nervous, but I liked it, being on the floor, that can't become comfortable. However, I was very nice to her, because we were very classy. And although we looked a lot of parts where I thought it was one of the best, it was actually mommy. And also I saw families walking together, sitting together, eating around the fire, or talking to each other, okay, it was a quality. This is the kind of experience I'm definitely looking forward to my next camping experience. If you're not, you must also be able to do it yourself.
Cambria, why don't you share your favorite way to hike?
So I grew up in, I was always looking outdoors, but I started camping probably each year. So camping is my favorite. However, I got a kayak and I knew it was safe and I still did, but I still really tried out.
Angela, why don't you share with us, what are your four things?
I'm looking for my gold panties. Very much. I take kids out into the rivers in gold panties.
All right, thank you ladies. So Cambria and I will just do a few slides on the necessity of nature. As you all know, we have shared these several times, that we are definitely trying to infuse nature into our programming this year, because there is such a nature deficit. So Cambria, you put together this slideshow, we're just gonna kind of go through it and just let you know why it's necessary.
So there's several benefits, but there's actually scientific, it's not just kind of a whimsical ideas about how being outside affects mentally and physically people, but there's actually scientific facts based on this. And it decreases your stress and your anxiety. It actually decreases the cortisol levels in your brain when you're outside. So that's one way that being outside in the trees really helps with your mental status.
It also increases your physical activity, which leads to a drop in diabetes and obesity.
It sharpens awareness and observation.
Provides necessary vitamin D, which strengthens your bone and your immune system.
It helps children and adults who suffer from ADHD, which is very common now, and other chemical imbalances to focus and engage.
And people who spend time gardening or in nature establish healthier eating habits, increase creative thinking and problem-solving skills.
I just want to add that the little boy holding up the zucchini that's in my garden, that's my twenty-year-old son, and then the three little boys that are on the beach, that's Tracy and I's little guys, so we really love each other.
Somehow they make it into our slideshow. Weird how that happens.
It said that if everyone visited their local parks for half an hour each week, there would be a seven percent fewer cases of depression and nine percent fewer cases of high blood pressure.
So how we are bringing nature to our citizens, so we are doing a nature-based youth program later this fall at the River Bluff Regional Park, we're gonna utilize one of our natural resources, the river down there. We'll be having volunteers come in and talk to the students about a variety of things such as plant identification, animal identification, we'll teach them how to build a fire, how to build a shelter, do natural crafts with them each week, and just get dirty and let them play. It's amazing, how many times we find that kids just don't get outside and climb a tree or play out in the dirt.
And then the other example is actually pictures of the campout. And so it was really great to see something we've thought about, talked about, come to life. And so we had Chris come out, who is Suzanne's son actually, and he brought out his falcon, I'm sorry.
Peregrine falcon.
Peregrine falcon, which was really neat, the kids absolutely enjoyed that. And then you can see the tents, we tried to pick out a shady area, helped people out if they needed, you know, had questions about putting up their tents and things like that. And the idea is that this is a low-cost way, it's thirty dollars a family, and to have an experience like that, including food, things like that, it's just a really inexpensive way to enjoy your family. So we had a great time.
Everyone asked us, they all want to come back next year.
Okay, so this is just that we wanted to show you how we connect with nature, with our families. Obviously it's a passion of Tracy and I, Tracy and I are also best friends outside of work. So we've been taking our children camping together for, you know, probably ten years now. And, you know, you don't have to go very far, there's Pine Crest, we were in Santa Cruz, we've been all over, that's Dardanelles. And so our question is, how do you like to interact with nature?
Thank you so much, Cambria.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Thank you very much. Citizens communication to the council on matters not included on the agenda. While the City Council welcomes and encourages participation in City Council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the City Council and not on the post-it agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the City Council from taking action on any matter which is not on the post-it agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the City Council. Citizens are entitled to address the City Council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. This is a reminder, at the top of the podium you'll see a green light, when you get within, I think a minute, the yellow light will go on, and when you've reached the five minutes, the red light will go on, so just be aware of that. With that, I do have one speaker card. It's from Anne Marie Montgomery, who's gonna give us, I think, an update on the library. Great.
I'm the City Library Supervisor, which is part of the Library of Series. Every Thursday at three thirty, we have children's a rally. Next few weeks we're going to have Lego play days, we've done thousands of Legos down on the floor, we've had a lot of these, and they just look very good. All of that is brought to us by friends of Series Library. And we're making copies, here is a way to make orders, so I can come up with a little outside. And we go run storytime, Wednesday, Thursday, Christmas Storytime. It is two days, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. We do take office hours, we're having lectures, small sessions of our storytelling, follow our invaluable firm literacy, creative music, books, and stories. You can play, there's a program with music, it's the S-Count, alternate Wednesday, seven thirty. We have a book club for adults, we have a book club, the Series Library Adult Book Club meets first Wednesday of the month, seven thirty. Last selection by Sarah Williams. Anyone can stop by and check out a book, it's a topic. Third Day Challenge is going on right now, leaders of all ages are invited to come by, available by community phone, coming to drop it off, and we're covering every event. It works within five days, we have tests for five blocks, a little money to get. These adults can give you baskets, they ran a party line, two five, or one third of them, and the town is like, they're trying to get them out. All the programs. All program information is available on online at cover.org, where I'm pretty scheduled to be available for any library attempt. All programs at Series Library are free, free programs are brought to you through the one H student dedicated to Texas, it's a library control, and you can use the points of experience at the Series. If anyone could stop by anytime you see, all of them have to change everything. All the resources available for anyone.
Thank you. I think it's a great resource, thank you. This time is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the council on a non-agenda item?
Leonard Shepherd, twenty-eight forty-one Fowler Road. I gotta tell ya, the war was here last Tuesday. There was more fireworks in the mobile home park where I live than any other year, and it was because they were totally banned from Las Casitas Mobile Home Park. There was more illegal fireworks right behind my house than there was anywhere else that we could hear them from. So, think about this. If I was to hand you a quarter stick of dynamite with a fuse in it, you'd probably go, oh my god, that's dynamite, don't bring it near me. Yet these idiots will pick up an M-80 cherry bomb, equivalent to a quarter stick of dynamite, and set them off and blow a finger off, or scare somebody's dog that drives it crazy, it's just insane. Think about the next couple of years, if you can't figure out some way of getting rid of fireworks in Series. That's, that's number one. Number two, I love the park, and I sat thirteen years on the Tuolumne River Regional Park Citizens Committee, loved it, it's a great place. And libraries, they're, they're just the best investment that I can think of for our tax dollars. You know, recreation, that's great, but if you can get people to read, they can go camping and take a book with them. Books are portable, and more important, at least in my opinion, a book held in the hand is worth three times more than one of these things here that you gotta read than, and, because a book's battery never runs down. And I'm just a firm believer that we need to read more, and we need to start our children when they're... My father sat me on his knee when I was three, four years old, and he read the paper. And he would read out loud, and I got to the point where I could understand, by the time I was five, I was reading first and second grade level books. I was past Dick and Jane. And that, to me, is the most important thing that parents can do for their children, is teach them to read. So we have a great library, we have some great parks, just let's not go into war every Fourth of July. Figure out a way of getting those folks to think about not blowing their fingers off and stuff. It's, I don't know, it's just insane. And, yeah, it's gonna be hot again. Everybody's talking about global warming, and they were so terrible, we were a hundred and eleven a couple days ago. Anybody here alive nineteen sixty-three? I think some of you were. In Fresno, California nineteen sixty-three, ten days straight, it never got below a hundred. And they're talking in schools about an ice age. It's nothing, it's just gonna get hot, 'cause it's the Central Valley of California. Welcome to Mother Nature. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council on a non-agenda item? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. We have no appointments to boards and commissions this evening. Conflict of interest declaration, is there anyone on the council that would like to declare a conflict of interest on any of the consent calendar items? Three public hearing items or one new business item? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or the public for special consideraids, consideration, excuse me. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by a roll call vote. This time is there anyone on the council that would like consent calendar item pulled for further discussion? Is there anyone in the audience that would like consent calendar item pulled for further Okay, hearing none, I'll bring it back to the council for direction.
Move to approve, one, two, three, four, five, A, six, seven.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, can we have the roll call vote please?
Councilmember DeRocset.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero one.
Thank you. We have no unfinished business this evening, public hearing, item number eight, public hearing to consider introduction of ordinance number ten forty-one, adding section two point two four point oh three oh to chapter two point two four of Title Two of the Series Municipal Code related to the recruitment and designation of reserve police officers.
Good evening, Council. Yes, our policy currently allows us to have reserve level ones, there's also two and three, but they require supervision. Level ones are ability, their ability is to work alone by themselves, basically like, basically like a full-time police officer. When I became chief, I asked for an audit from post, and they granted that, and they came down and noticed that we did not have a municipal code to back up our reserve officers. At the time it was Officer Wheeler, and currently we have Jerry Kessler, who's retired from the Highway Patrol. What this means is, is these, a reserve level one needs to have twenty-four-hour police officer status. So if we don't allow this municipal code to happen, when they get off work, they're no longer a police officer, they can't carry a weapon off duty. So what I would have to do as a police chief is to issue them a CCW permit, which would, in my opinion, not be the right thing to do. I think we need to cover our reserve officers and give them the peace officer status that they need to have, because it is protecting them. They risk themselves to work here in the daytime, so it's basically this municipal code will give them that status. Post understands, are kind of waiting to see what we do with this, and we'll move on with our audit.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, at this time I'll open it up to the public, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item?
Pass it. I mean, they're putting their lives on the line during the day, and then they go home and they can't carry, and that, everybody knows they're a cop, but you're not a cop once you leave the patrol car, I guess. So pass that ordinance, get them covered twenty-four-seven, and I don't think it's gonna cost anything, is it, just to change the wording? So...
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for direction.
Move for approval of ordinance number ten forty-one.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, can we have the roll call vote please?
Councilmember DeRocset.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero one.
Okay, next, item number nine, public hearing to consider introduction of ordinance number ten forty-two, adding chapter five, disposal of pharmaceutical-controlled substances to Title Four, public welfare, safety, and health of the Series Municipal Code in association with the Drop the Drugs Prescription Medication Disposal Program.
Yes, this one is obviously a program that we support. We have no issues with having this drop box in our lobby, our evidence clerk will take care of everything from there. I do have a presentation that's gonna be given by Jim Rokitis and Joe Olivera, both are retired police officers, I think Joe was, actually worked here at Series at one time, so, there we go.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for allowing us to present quickly to you, I have a rather lengthy presentation, and it's only gonna take about five minutes, so we should be able to get through it rather quickly. We just have, a lot of us know through the media and through our own personal experience, there's people that have suffered issues with prescription medication, medication abuse, addiction, and serious injury and death as a result to the use of prescribed drugs. A lot of this stuff I'm gonna just get through quickly, I think you have a copy of the presentation, so if you want to go through it at a later time, that's great, but we need to keep in mind what the difference between misuse and abuse is. And many people misuse medication just out of ignorance, they're not sure what they should take, they become confused with what it is that they're taking. And abuse is a conscious decision to use a medication outside of the way it's been prescribed. So when we look at the years nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand and thirteen, we can see that the number of prescriptions for prescription medication, opioids in particular, has quadrupled in that time. And that's a little out of our control, that's where we need to educate doctors in our community, but there's a direct connection between prescription opioids and heroin abuse. And I think many of us in this room know about this, I can give you personal stories of young people that I've worked with, that I know, that I've coached, that have started to play around with prescription medication, and when that medication runs out, when a source runs out, they very quickly turn to heroin abuse. And for many, many years, we saw heroin abuse in decline, and we had problems with cocaine, and we had many problems with methamphetamine, and now we're seeing heroin abuse starting to reach an epidemic proportion again. And most of that is a result of prescription medication abuse. On this chart, if you look between the ages of eighteen and twenty-five, that makes up virtually half of all the people in Stanislaus County that are abusing prescription medication. We'll move through this, I do want to talk quickly about our Drop the Drugs program. Back in two thousand and nine, my supervisor, Jennifer Marsh, and folks with the Stanislaus County Drug Enforcement Agency and federal DEA got together and developed a program here in Stanislaus County, where we would go out and do public events, where we would collect prescription medication. The feds, looking at this program, have adopted that, without giving Stanislaus County their due credit, but they now have a national take-back program, and perhaps you see that on the news, on television programs, twice a year, in the spring and the fall. DEA actually gets behind a national program, and then we also with our Drop the Drugs program, piggyback on that. So twice a year, we're out picking up prescription medications, and since two thousand and nine, we've collected over nineteen thousand pounds of prescription medications. It's been a very successful program, we saw all kinds of neat bottles that show up from, you know, back in the fifties and sixties, there's stuff that people have had stored in their house for decades. Many of us have elderly family members that pass away, and we're stuck with, you know, boxes and boxes of medication, and people would used to throw them out, they dump them down the toilet, and we know that doesn't work because of environment, people are dumpster diving and find this stuff, and it gets out to the public. So, looking at where these pills and this medication comes from, over half of the people that obtain these, get them from a friend or a family member. Okay, those people are usually getting them the correct way, from a doctor. But when we're prescribed medications, a lot of times they're stored in our medicine cabinet, in our cupboards, and when we're done taking the medication, it sits there. And we have our own children, grandchildren, friends of our children, that come into the house, and they have easy access to that medication. So we wanted to develop a program where the public has easy access to disposal, and that's where really this program has been developed. And so we have the Drop the Drugs program, where we go out in the public, and we have a campaign to get rid of them, but we wanted to make it even easier on our community members. And so the sheriff's office here in Stanislaus County was the first agency that stepped up and said, we'll pilot the program. And so in all five of their facilities, they have a box, a mailbox that's secure, that's in their lobby, and members of the public during business hours can enter the lobby and dispose of their medication, no question asked. We looked at San Diego County and Alameda County as the agencies that were doing it the right way. We created a lot of our documentation and developed our program after what they did down in San Diego County. The Modesto Police Department joined us, recently we've had Turlock and Oakdale, and now hopefully Series. And we've got one more after that, that's the City of Newman. But it's really a low-cost or no-cost item for you. We provide the box, we have it wrapped, I think what you have in front... the box, we have it wrapped, I think what you have in front of you is a copy of the document that we provide out to the public, that tells people where these boxes are located. The Stanislaus Drug Enforcement Agency then will go out to the individual departments, pick up the materials, really, the only thing that our individual law enforcement agencies need to do is package it and book it for disposal, and maintain that in the facility until DEA comes out and they remove that to be disposed of at the Coventa Plant. So you could see here, there's some good information on here, facts about medication abuse, about heroin, we also need to address people that have stored syringes in their homes, we accept those at our drop events, but we do not accept those for safety reasons at the police department, so that's on the front of the box, that is in this document, but we do give information within this document and our advertising to the community that they can still go out onto Hackett Road, not Hackett Road, but where the, they accept batteries and light bulbs and everything with Department of Environmental Resources, and they accept the syringes for disposal. So that's the one thing that we want to make sure we educate the community about, is we don't want them placing syringes into these boxes, just for safety of the officers that are cleaning them out. So that's a look at it, the box actually has the Series badge displayed on it, and the reason we do this, we can't just give them out and say we can't do it without an ordinance, is because of federal regulations. For anybody to be able to accept prescription medications not prescribed to them, it has to fall under an ordinance that allows a law enforcement agency to do this, so really, it's a formality to adopt a resolution like this and place this in our ordinances, to give the opportunity to our community to safely dispose of medication. I think I'm under five minutes, I didn't see the red light go off, so, if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer that, or Joe would be happy to answer that.
Are there any questions? Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Okay, at this time, I'll open up to the public, if there's anyone that would like to speak on this item?
Echo, do it, pass it, it's one of the better programs, so, do your job, say aye.
There anyone else? Councilmember Rhino?
I have a couple of questions. Our lobby will not have to be modified at all to accommodate this drop box?
The box will need to be bolted to the floor, but it's concrete.
We, I mean, we have enough room in our lobby, because our lobby seems pretty small, but...
We're going to get to that, too, because it's going to get bigger.
Really?
Yes, we do have plans for that for the next fiscal year, but we'll make room for it this year.
Okay. And in the staff report, it says Stanislaus County Behavioral Health and Recovery Services has offered to cover startup cost, what costs are involved after?
That's who they work for, so.
Okay.
It's basically the purchase of the box, that box, the bottom picture, and then also putting together the fire that goes out, so that's all.
Okay, but Chief Smith, then, say, six months down the line, is there going to be any additional cost to the city, then, is there any additional cost?
No.
Okay. Then my only other comment would be, the staff report says that we're going to have a secure drop box in the lobby of the Series Police Department, but then when you look at the ordinance, it says that the secure drop box will be in the lobby of the Series Police Department, or any other facility designated by the chief of police. So I would want it, the ordinance, just to read that it would be a secure drop box in the lobby of the Series Police Department, and delete the, or any other facility designated by the chief of police.
It's obviously something we could do, it's just easier to not have to change an ordinance, if that were to change at some point in the future, our suggestion would be, leave the language in the ordinance, allow us that flexibility, if you would like to add, upon council approval, by resolution, just so we don't have to amend an ordinance, which is a public hearing and a notice and all of those things, if you allow us to add that language, it would mitigate the issue, give council the comfort that we're not just putting these anywhere, but at the same time, keeping the ordinance as clean as possible and having that future flexibility.
And that would be fine with me.
Okay.
Tom, any, do you see any issue with that simple adjustment?
So that's your motion?
Yes, that was my motion.
Perfect.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRocette.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes four, zero, one.
Thank you, item number ten, public hearing to consider resolution number two thousand seventeen dash oh six two, a new schedule of fees and charges for the city facility and park rental rates. Ms. Ferris?
Okay, you can see it, as you can see, I like color, hello, my name is Tracy Ferris, I'm back, I'm the Recreation Manager for the City of Series, I was asked by council to do a fee study of all of our facilities, as well as our park spaces here in Series, we have not had a fee increase since two thousand and ten, so it's not working. Sorry, ah, the IT manager, Recreation Manager. Okay, here we are. Let's try this again. Okay, so I came to, I came to you guys, actually, to let you know that it has been since two thousand and ten, since we have had a rate increase, and I felt like we needed to look at our fees again, so I have these past several months done a fee study, to look at all of our parks and facilities, so today, I'm going to talk to you about our tiered pricing structure, our old tiers versus our new tiers, and give illustrative examples of the pricing breakdown, talk about ancillary fees such as security and insurance, and the proposed price increases that I have, I've given you guys a really lengthy packet, approximately ten pages of the fee study, as well as the staff report, so I'm going to keep the slides pretty simple, and if you have any questions, we can talk about that after. So, one of the reasons that I wanted to really look at our fees, and kind of reduce our tiered pricing structure, is because there are, right now, we have four tiers, we have our commercial non-resident, our resident rate, our non-local nonprofit, and then our local nonprofit, so it's a lot of information to digest, not only for our customers, but also for our staff to convey to our customers, so I felt like if we streamlined down to two tiers, having our commercial non-resident, which is a hundred percent recovery, and then our resident nonprofit, which is ninety percent recovery, so we're still discounting our residents and our local nonprofits, that it's easier, it'll increase the level of communication between our staff, as well as our customer base, it'll just be easier to digest for them, so that was the first thing that, in doing this fee study, that I really wanted to make sure we took a look at, and per our last discussion, you guys were on board with doing that, so those are our two new tiers. I've given you just an illustrative breakdown of our large assembly, actually, the illustrative breakdown is in your packet, I wanted to keep my slides really simple, so our old price, which our kitchen was rented separately from the large assembly, and if you recall, I suggested that we have that be inclusive, because ninety-five percent of the people who rent the large assembly also rent the kitchen, so it just seems counterintuitive to have it be a separate fee, because then it's just one more thing I have to list when someone's coming in to ask about the prices, so the old price was fifteen eighty-five, the new price, which also includes the kitchen, but it's just a flat fee, you can use the kitchen, or choose not to, you still pay the same rate, is eighteen eighteen, that is our hundred percent fee recovery, so that's tier two, I believe. And then also, along the other side, I have Smyrna Park picnic areas, so all of our old picnic, our old price for the picnic areas was fifty-one, and the new price is sixty, so as you can see, it's not changing too terribly, I did a comparative analysis of all of the cities around us when I, when coming up with these fees, and then also looked at the various department, the costs for each of the departments, what goes into really cleaning the area, making sure we're maintaining it well, and then staff time, so that we're not overcharging, but we are recouping our costs. The ancillary fees that I discussed, and the deposits, we have liability insurance, security, we have our facility deposits, our parks deposits, and something new, which is a cleaning fee, so our liability insurance and our security, we currently contract for those, so Hub offers our liability insurance, we are just kind of a middleman, if you will, we do not collect any fees, although it takes a considerable amount of admin time to process the liability insurance, so you as a renter, if you come in and you're not a homeowner, you can purchase insurance through us, it's a requirement for all facility rentals, not park rentals, but facility rentals, so in adjusting the fee, I've included the admin time that it takes to process all of that, because we are definitely losing in that area by not including an admin fee, as well as with security, we are also a middleman for security, all of our events require security, we have a contract with Ontel, I actually just came and asked you if you guys would extend that, considerable admin time goes into processing all of the, we have to reserve the security officers, and then we also have to pay all the invoices, collect the fees from the renter, and so we have now included an admin fee in security, we've also, I've also tried to make it a flat fee, so whereas before, for example, security was twenty dollars and forty-four cents per hour, now it's a flat fee, so it's, again, something easier to convey to the customers, easier math for all of us involved. Our facility deposits, I've kept those the same, parks deposits also kept the same, the cleaning fee, we have a contract with Environment Control, they do all of our custodial here, so if we have an event on a Saturday night, and the renter chooses not to clean, which surprisingly enough, happens quite often, we typically will get pictures to support the extra charges that Environment Control might have to pay, or might charge us for the renter, you know, leaving the place a mess, and so we are, we would like to institute an excessive cleaning fee, which would be based upon the evidence of our staff leaving, they leave us an email at the end of the night, as well as photographic evidence, for those renters who are choosing to just disregard their responsibilities when they're leaving our facility a mess. This is the proposed pricing for the facilities, I know that for the audience, it's hard to read at all, but we will have copies available, it's definitely streamlined, it's two tiers instead of four tiers, it's in your packet, I just wanted to leave it so that you could see that this is, would be, we would give this to the customer, and it's very easy to, and clear what their price would be, I haven't, I'm proposing to not change any of the fees for weekday rentals, I feel like we still, that's an area that we could still see some growth in our rentals would be during the weekdays, so because of that, you know, our weekends are definitely the highest priority, we book out, we're booked out, we have like three days, three Saturdays left for the whole year in the large assembly, so I'd like to keep the weekday rentals at penetration pricing, rather than competitive pricing. And then our proposed park fees, one of the things that I would like to address in here, so I went through all of our park sites, I have walked Smyrna Park, and with Jeremy Damas, our Public Works Director, as well as Brian Yarbury, our Parks Supervisor, and we have identified two areas where we feel that that park could support additional rentable spaces, so I have actually proposed those in the fee study, that we would include two new areas at Smyrna Park, I've also proposed that we would make Sam Rhino Park, the covered area, a reservable space as well, currently, it is a first-come, first-serve area, but if we are looking for ways to generate revenue, I feel like the parks, you know, we definitely, especially Smyrna, it's our largest neighborhood, our community park, I'm sorry, and we are, we do have areas that we could definitely have additional tables and picnic areas, and then Sam Rhino Park is a new covered area, we only have four covered spaces now in the Central Valley, we know how hot it is, and there's always a lack of shade, and so those areas always rent up the fastest, our covered areas, so that is something that I am proposing, but I know that there might be someone who has questions on that, and so at this point, I'm ready to take any questions, if you have them.
Councilmember Rhino?
On the Smyrna Park picnic area, seven and eight, the new, is, do we already have the existing tables out there?
No, actually, I've worked, I'm working with Jeremy, and we're purchasing those tables.
And where will the money come for the purchase of those tables?
Yes.
Well, we're coming from the foundation, and we have...
Community Foundation, Series Community Foundation.
Eight of them budgeted for last year, for replacements, so four of them will go for one of the pads, and the other four will be spread out to the parks, they have the metal tables.
Okay, and do we have to put cement pads down as well, and that will be staff time that does that?
Right, and that's done.
Okay, oh, we already have the cement pads?
Yeah, we did that, we did that two, about two weeks ago, we didn't know that.
Okay, are you, you know where Strawberry Fields or Strawberry Park is?
Yes.
Do we have anything out there that's rentable? I mean, I know there's a bathroom, but I don't know if there's picnic, isn't there, isn't there a picnic area over by the playground?
Right, by the playground, basketball court back.
But you're not...
On the tables, it's pretty, it's, it's just very small.
Yeah. So you aren't recommending renting that? No. Then there's a little park over on about Tenth and Evilly, and I don't know if, isn't it like Tenth and Evilly, over, yeah, do they have any tables or anything?
Tables, there's just, there's benches around the playground area, there is one table, I believe, there is one table with a little barbecue there.
Okay, but we...
It's just a one.
But we're not recommending reserving that? Okay, as far as the Sam Rhino Park, as I told Toby and Tracy, I was just thinking color, Tracy color, I received a call from someone that lives in the Brown area today, and they were concerned because they felt that they were already paying into the Landscape and Lighting District, and they felt that they shouldn't have to pay to reserve this picnic area, that they feel they're already paying, and I think the city manager's going to address that.
Yeah, so the Lighting and Landscaping District function is for maintenance, and so that maintenance is the routine maintenance that we kind of talked about at the last meeting, you know, maintaining the park, and general maintenance of the covered area, this fee program is really providing the reservation process and those incremental increase in costs associated with the, you know, concentrated use of that facility, i.e., it's going to generate more trash and things for a city staff member to go pick up the trash associated with the rental of that facility, so it's a separate, it is kind of a, call it a one above than the base maintenance, which is for anybody's use. We haven't to date, hadn't had any challenges or problems with that facility being a first-come, first-served, but other communities, we've seen this in the past, where once it gets really popular, that folks really, you know, strive to be there early in the morning to reserve that gazebo or covered area, to make sure that they can have their birthday party there, so it does provide some assurances that folks can have their birthday party and scheduled accordingly, the challenge with kind of using the alternative approach of what the resident had indicated, really creates some problems of having to verify, okay, do they actually live there, are they in that area, how many would they allow? How many would they allow? Is it unlimited use? Could a particular resident, you know, lock that up for, you know, extended period of time and say, I'm going to use it every weekend for the next six weeks? So there's logistical challenges. If there was, if council directs us, you know, this was something that staff came up with, an idea of a small revenue generation. Is it a large dollar amount? Not likely. But it is something that the community has obviously, with our other experiences, they valued because they continue to use those facilities and pay the rental fees that we've had. So we do feel like there is an opportunity here for a small amount of revenue and provide that option of reserving it there in the community. But I can, I can understand the concern, but we do see them as two separate fees because they are paying for two different things.
Right. And, and you might see them as two, but I think this particular person, that call, didn't see it as two different fees.
Understood.
And I don't know that we really will generate that much money from the reservation because we're already going to be paying sixty, paying for sixty minutes of maintenance worker time and then the other times associated in here, so.
It's not a large revenue generation. Again, it provides some security that someone's able to use that when they want to without having to get out there at seven in the morning and put up their signs. But, but again, that's a council direction.
And, and I can see the difference between that park and Roding Heights because Roding Heights is a neighborhood park as well, but they don't pay into any extra fees.
Correct. It's not in the Lighting and Landscaping District.
Right.
Right.
So personally, I would like to see that excluded only because of the concern from someone who lives in that area, that they already feel that they're paying for basically the use of that park. So why should they have to pay extra to reserve it?
I'll look for council direction on that matter.
It's a question. If I live, which I do, but say I live over off of Moffett and Acorn, and so should I be able to use Smyrna Park without reserving it?
Yes, you can, actually. You don't have to reserve, you don't have to reserve a picnic area to use it. It's only if you want to reserve it to guarantee that you're going to have a spot. So say you're going to have forty people coming from out of town, well, do you want to take a chance that no one else is going to beat you to it? You don't, then you go ahead and you reserve it. So you don't, you don't have to pay to reserve it, but you do take a chance that somebody else may get there, you know, at five in the morning and stake it out or something if there isn't.
And you're just talking of a picnic spot, not an overhead, you know, just a table that sits kind of off by your house, right? There's that one area there. But you could reserve, I'm just trying to get-
Well, I don't know if those are reservable or not.
No, I'm just, you know, but I understand, I understand what you're saying. I just see that there's this big, because I'm confused, right?
But we're not, but we're not talking Smyrna, which is a community park. We're talking about a smaller neighborhood park. And I don't know, do people from Modesto that use our Smyrna Park, do they even know that we have a park in a neighborhood over there that they could reserve or that they could use? I don't, I don't know. But you, you can't compare Smyrna and a community park. They're not, to me, they're not at all the same.
Any other questions? Okay, Councilmember Lane?
Um, getting to the, back to the proposal, the tier one and tier two. You know, living over near Smyrna Park, seeing kind of how the crowds gather, and you can tell me, maybe it's not a big deal, right? But I look at the Lions covered area, right? And I've been by there after a party and I've seen guys really have to do a lot of cleaning out there, left the thing just a kind of a mess. And you've got twenty-five tables, two large grills, and you're charging seventy-seven dollars for tier one with a twenty-dollar deposit. And then you go to Rotary Grove, has ten tables, four small barbecues, charging the same amount. It seems to me like there would be more impact if you got, and I've seen it. I mean, I've seen the garbage that's left and I've seen our guys tend to spend some time around that particular area, Lions, because, you know, twenty-five tables, sometimes you've got a hundred and fifty people underneath that cover. I've seen that. So is there a reason why that shouldn't be more than what it is?
Well, so when I was coming up with the fees, I kind of, I had to average out the time. So, because there are some days where it doesn't take as long to clean it because it's not as heavy of a usage. And in trying to remain consistent, yes, it is a larger area, it's larger than Roding Heights as well, but I looked at them all as covered areas in my discussions with Toby. We were just, I was trying to standardize the pricing to make it a little bit easier. So all the picnic areas, while they don't all have four tables and two small grills, the majority of them do. So it just seemed easier to remain consistent on the pricing and all the picnic areas are the same price as well as all the covered areas. But I do understand your point. It is a larger space, so, I mean, if, if you're recommending that I take a further look at the covered areas and make them-.
I, you know, I don't think, I don't really see it any different than the small hall and the large hall. Smaller hall costs less money because they don't have the impact that you would have in the large hall, here talking here. So to me, I think we should kind of look at that.
It is a relative estimate, though. I mean, at the end of the day, we're estimating over the course of a year, you know, all of these different events and how much time staff is spending on a particular area. And it is an estimate. So, and we could do a study and spend some time and, and analyze how much time is actually being spent on, you know, the size of a party at each one of these. And again, we use the same methodology that was used before. So it's kind of the return value of, of how much effort do we want to spend to get a really, really accurate number versus an estimate, which we think is relatively reasonable, that stands up to the test of time of the smell test. Is it, how much time does it take our staff to, to take care of, you know, if there's four garbage cans to empty versus two? Is it twice the amount of time? Not usually, because they could generally pull the truck right up there and it's, it's an extra minute, not twice the time. So that's, that's the variation there. Is there more work? Yeah, but it's also measured out and balanced out over the course of the year. Is it a reasonable estimate of the cost of providing the service? And, you know, we do feel that it is reasonable. Could it be justified to be a little bit higher? Possibly. But at the same time, we've, we've got to have that balance that we want to continue to not price ourselves out of this and make the, the community not recognize the, the asset that we have.
Councilmember Rhino?
Jeremy, without going into spending a lot of time, wouldn't your guys be able to tell you typically on, say, a Sunday morning, how much time they spend cleaning that twenty-five table area? I mean, they would be able just to, like, probably off the top of their head, correct?
Correct. And we do that at budget time for all the expenditures for the ISFs for all departments. So yeah, we could sit down and come up with some numbers. Which we, which we did. You know, when Tracy and I sat down originally and went over this program, we did that. We came up with rough, not, not exacts, but pretty rough numbers because the Lion Slab was compared a lot to River Bluff. You know, there was a lot of comparisons there and it's, it's, you know, thirty, forty-five minutes, sometimes sixty minutes, sometimes it's thirty minutes. Just depends on the averages and who's renting it and who's not. But, you know, we could track, every time we went out there and did anything, we could track it.
You know, I, I've seen the last number of weekends that I've been in town, that there's been a lot of people using that. I've seen a wedding at the Kinsenetta. I've seen more than, probably a lot of amount of people that would be there. And then when you use a facility such as this or the Legion Hall, you must have, you know, security and, and that's not part of the equation, obviously. They're not paying for any of that. And then I remember Mr. Shepherd said something about the outsiders coming in town, the Merced people and the, and the Modesto and the Stockton and they, you know, this is a park that's centrally located, that's, I'm talking about Smyrna Park, that's right there in the middle. And, you know, it's, it's, we, we got all these outsiders coming in town. I mean, I'm looking at this and it's a great job, a lot of data, a lot of information, you know, not to nitpick it, but, you know, commercial, non-resident and then obviously resident, nonprofit. But could there be a nonprofit which is not inside the town or a commercial that is commercial inside, like say Casey Moving Systems compared to somebody that would be from Merced? It, it would just be nice if, I think, because if I'm looking at the clientele that's around there, and I know a lot of people in Series, obviously there's a lot of people, I get it, but I know a lot of people. You know, most of those people that might be using that area there, they're, they're not from Series, so that can, goes back to the, with the statement that you stated before. And not to make your job anymore, I like the two-tier thing. I just see in regards to, you know, being a, a nonprofit, but the nonprofit might be out of Sacramento and they're coming down here and, and they're getting the, the great rates. I don't know, that's just a good thought.
Well, two, two points that I wanted to just bring up really quickly. So I, I looked at, this is our old rental sheet and I, I know I didn't, I apologize, I didn't give it to you. But just so you are in the, aware, we have currently been charging the same price for the covered area at Smyrna Park as we do for Area Six, as we do for River Bluff. So when I was coming up with the pricing structure, the new pricing structure, I took that into consideration, that we currently already had fees in place where all of the covered areas cost the same. With regard to the tiers, as you mentioned, our nonprofit rate, it's atypical that we will get an out-of-town nonprofit more often than not. It's either Stan Sloss County or it's a local nonprofit such as, you know, like our service organizations. Are we going to have, you know, the outlier that comes in from Sacramento? Absolutely. But in ti, in trying to reduce it to, to two tiers, I can't really, my two tiers can't reflect the out-of-town, I mean, that's why I have the commercial non-res and not the, the, yeah, commercial non-res, is they pay the full amount. So I-
Yeah, the structure is set up so that that's the cost recovery, right? The, the way these things are set up as a fee for use, we're covering our costs. And so the hundred percent recovery is the commercial nonprofit. And we're giving a reduction, a, a ten percent savings or ninety percent cost for the resident and nonprofits. So, you know, the theory goes that the nonprofits are nonprofit, they're not making any money off of this, so we're giving them a break. Same thing with the residents, they already pay taxes and live here, so we're giving them that benefit as well. Again, we had the, the four-tier structure that provided a little more gap there and we took council direction at the last discussion to, to simplify it. And as we all know, you know, we've, we've been challenged in both this facility and others, and our fiscal challenges, to try and shrink that gap between our operational costs and the revenue that we're bringing in. So, you know, this, the direction that you previously gave is, I think, critical to help continue closing that gap and find these ways to, to, to make sure the revenue and the, and the costs that we're actually fully capturing as much of those costs as we possibly can.
Okay. My, my opinion on this, I think, with there twenty, being twenty-five tables at the Lions covered area, that perhaps there should be a little bit more of a price premium for that area. I, I would imagine that that area goes, is rented first and foremost, especially if, you're looking at it versus some of the others. And I still think it's, it's not a bad price for being able to rent that covered area. So that would be my opinion. And then as far as the, the reservation or deposit, what happens if some, if we didn't have that policy? If somebody wanted to camp out overnight, could they be there?
Yep. Overnight, typically Ontel will kick them out of there.
What if it's twelve oh one?
Six o'clock in the morning, they're there. Six o'clock in the morning, the residents who want to use these reserved areas are camping out on those picnic tables until somebody walks up and puts their card up that they've reserved it.
Okay. But if I said, hypothetically, if I went out there at twelve oh one, this next day, I could say that I got there the day of?
Could, but Ontel wouldn't allow you on property.
Okay.
Ontel, we run everybody out. Dust it on.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. At this time, if there are no more questions, I want to open it up for the public for any comments at this time. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have one more thing, sorry. I just realized, made another error, so I'm going to follow in the sword here. My deposits, I did increase that to forty dollars. Currently, they pay a twenty-dollar deposit for a reserved sign, a lock and key that the resident or whomever who reserves the space comes and gets and locks up on the sign at the, their picnic area. During a discussion with Todd, our facility supervisor, he indicated that twenty dollars would not cover the cost should the sign go missing or not be returned to us. So in my verbiage, I said I wanted it to be forty dollars, but on my pretty little paper with all the colors, it only says twenty because that's what it's always been. So my apologies, I will correct that. So, yeah, carry on.
And is the deposit refundable when they bring this out?
It is. It's a refundable deposit, absolutely. When they bring the sign and key and lock back to us, they get their full deposit back.
Okay.
Any other questions before we open it up? All right. This time I'll open it up for the public. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? Okay. Seeing Donald bring back the council for a direction.
Going back to Smyrna Park, does it have to be a fee study? Can we say, hey, I'd like to say twenty dollars more, or, you know? I mean-
It, it generally wouldn't pass the smell test if we just arbitrarily. I would recommend if you'd like us-
Well, I don't see any that would pass the smell test.
Well, it does because we've got the data to back it up.
But I mean, if I'm looking at twenty-five tables-
But you need to look at, you need to look at the study, the actual data. What I would suggest is, we've heard your comments, is let us, if you continue us, continue this to the next meeting, let us bring this item back to you. That'd be a much cleaner way to do it so we can take a closer look at what your concerns are, make sure that our math in the study justifies and that it passes that concern and we'll bring that back.
And then you can revise the deposit.
Exactly. We'll, we'll correct those other things, we'll bring you back a clean study with those updates and you'll be able to see it all at one time.
And as part of the revision to the study, would that include talking to the maintenance workers who work out there?
Yeah, we already have that information.
Okay.
Yeah. We would make sure that-
What about Sam Rhino Park?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that the whole thing is going to be continued. Is that what?
Yeah, but we need, we need a direction.
I'm sure.
I have a question real quick about the soccer fields. The tournament fees for three hundred and sixty dollars, is that one field of the-
Per field.
It's per field?
Mm-hmm. That didn't change.
Like, I couldn't tell, but perfect. Thank you.
Okay, I'd move. Next meeting will be okay?
Well, yeah, but we do need some, clear on the changes that you've referenced, but on the Rhino Park, what would you like to do there? Are we including it or not including it?
Well, based on what I have heard from someone who lives in the neighborhood who's affected by it, I would say not to include it. And I would think if somewhere in the future we start having problems where somebody just starts camping out there, like every weekend and then no one else can use it, then I think at that time, then we revisit making it a reservation. But there isn't that problem now, is there? That you've heard?
Not that I've heard.
Okay.
No, we've heard of. One, one option could be to, to set the fee and just not make it reservable today so that would at least give us that flexibility that when it becomes reservable, we already have it. Otherwise, we had to come back for this action. But again, council direction.
You okay with that? You okay with that?
Mm-hmm. As, as long as we're not going to charge the, the reservation fee now.
Gotcha. But for the rest of the council, you, but you don't want it to be reservable now, so we can-
Correct.
Okay. Or we can just take it out and be looking for which of your preferences.
So just what you said, it's fine?
Well, we can just eliminate it and that's probably the easiest and cleanest route.
Okay. Then I, I would say let's eliminate it until we do have a problem.
The rest of the council?
That's fine.
That's fine.
Okay. So you, you need a motion to continue the item?
Yeah, to date certain to the July twenty-fourth meeting.
Okay, move that we continue item ten, resolution number two thousand seventeen dash six-two to next regular, is that going to be okay, next meeting? Which is?
July twenty-fourth.
July twenty-fourth.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Can we have the roll call? Roll, please.
Councilmember DeRosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lane?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
And Mayor Viera?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero one.
Okay. Thanks. Moving to new business, we have one item. Consider an out-of-boundary service extension request to extend a city of Series waterline approximately three thousand feet to the Series West Mobile Home Park at twenty-thirty East Grayson Road.
Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll keep my comments brief, and we'll let the applicant do most of the talking this evening. As indicated in the staff report, this is the second time the council has considered this request, the first time was a year ago, indicated not interested in pursuing this. The applicant has completed a study showing the different options that are available to them, the studies provides them two viable options for solving their water quality issues at their mobile home park. They have a strong preference, and the state has indicated a strong preference for the connection to the city of Series. As indicated in the staff report, staff is not supportive of this effort due to concerns and long-term issues related to this connection. And so, again, staff is, would be recommending denial of the request, but we will allow you to hear from the applicant and the information provided in the packet unless you have any questions of staff before, otherwise I'll turn it over to the applicant to make their presentation.
Okay. At this time, I'll open it up for the applicant if they would like to speak on this item.
My name's Brenda Comfort, I've been the main person corresponding with Tom Westbrook and others on, and submitting information to you guys. Tonight, I've invited a representative from the state water board and the engineer we've been working with, in hopes that we can answer any of your questions and concerns and address why we still believe, why we're requesting for consolidation to resolve our water issue. So, I will introduce Alfonso.
Just wearing that. As mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak in favor of this request tonight. My name is Alfonso Manrique, and my firm, AM Consulting Engineers, we've been working with PES Matson Partners, did for evaluating alternatives. We prepared a water facility study, which I believe you have a copy of in your packet, or you have a copy of the most recent packet. Is everyone aware, I mean, this is the second time it comes to the council, is everyone aware where we're talking about? It's Series West Mobile Home Park, it's a little mobile home park about half a mile out of town on Grayson and Central Avenues. Got about, I think, forty-seven sites, and they got a well where they obtained their water supply, and that well recently became, or has had arsenic creeping up, and now it's above the drinking water level, so those residents are drinking water that has arsenic in excess of the MCL, of the drinking water level. The study that we prepared looks at options, I know the city wanted the applicant to look at options, and we looked at three options, at several options, but, you know, we looked at doing a new well, drilling a new well, and that was discarded from the beginning, it's not, wasn't included in this report, it's briefly mentioned, but it was discarded because there wasn't any room really on the site to drill a new well, and most likely any well in that area would have contained arsenic anyway. We also looked at something that the state calls point of use, point of entry, which is locating little devices, like under the sink, mound devices to treat arsenic, and that's also an alternative, but the state really only allows that alternative as the last resort, and whenever there isn't any other feasible alternative, so that alternative was also discarded and not considered. We looked at the alternative of, one of the alternatives in this discussion, this report is doing treatment, so, including a treatment system that will remove the arsenic from the groundwater supply. And we also looked at the alternative of connecting to the city of Series. Now, we have, on that, we have developed two sub-alternatives, depending on where the connection happens, but we developed some cost estimates on that, the cost estimates are included in the report. This report was revised in June, based on comments from the state, and some of their fees, and some of their sampling requirements for small systems. And we have, so we have revised the costs, we have prepared lifecycle costs, where the connection to the city of Series ends up being the most cost-effective alternative for those residents. It's a disadvantaged community, disadvantaged residents, and the state will greatly support that alternative. Having treatment in small sites has proven to be, in the long term, not a good idea, these districts, these small systems don't have the technical capability or the managerial or the financial ability to kind of sustain on their own for the long term. And joining a larger system is something that is the most likely to be successful alternative in the long run, and is also the least costly alternative for them. Now, I understand you guys have some, had some concerns about funding, about this becoming a precedence, or about the new rates going up in your community and that making it not affordable, or even, you know, how would you, you know, make sure that this individual pays their water bills and that doesn't end up being a collection, issue. But Michelle, she's from the state, and I think she's got some things to add in terms of the funding and for this project, and what the state can actually offer to the city, you know, for connecting or for allowing a connection to this small, small system.
Evening, if you all hear me okay. First of all, my name's Michelle Frederick, and I work with the State Water Resources Control Board in the Division of Drinking Water. I am the Northern California Consolidation Coordinator, so I help small systems like Series West or different public water systems that are struggling to work through whatever problems there might be in consolidation, oftentimes there's LAFCO issues, or there's, you know, there's technical issues or funding, and sort of working through the different hurdles of that, and understanding what different people's concerns might be. So, as Alfonso said, they are exceeding arsenic MCL, they're twice the legal limit for this disadvantaged community, so it's obviously a concern for us as a public health issue that it be resolved. And as Alfonso said, really with arsenic, there's also additional issues with disposal of the waste. We have, they really need technical operators who are professional, and it's often needs, you know, where we have arsenic treatment across the state, we typically have very professional, well-trained operators, and it's hard for a small water system to have that capability, just because it accounts for the cost to, like, you all can. So, I did look at your previous council minutes to try and understand what might be an issue for you all, so I came up with two things, one being the mobile home parks, and so I took a look at what different mobile home parks are around here in Series, and there are eleven of them that I ran into, and I'm more than happy to share this with you afterwards. There are three that I found that are not served by either Modesto or already served by Series. One is Sunrise Village Mobile Home Park, that is its own public water system. El Rancho Mobile Estates is its own public water system, and so is Mobile Plaza Park. Now, Mobile Plaza Park is part of a consolidation right now, a project with the Keys, so that is not of a concern. And Sunrise Village Mobile Home Park is actually closer to Modesto, and so if there was any sort of consolidation potential, it would probably be with the city of Modesto. And then, El Rancho Mobile Estates is a state's small public water system, so right now, it has about eight connections. So, when I reached out to the county, and it does not appear that they have any known problems at this point in terms of public health, so there may be other mobile home parks that you guys would like to talk about, but of the ones that we have right now, that seemed to not be a tremendous precedent setting from the data that I pulled up. And also, in that LAFCO only allows public health and safety out-of-service area agreements, I don't see that being an issue. And I think it's also important to point out, we also, in January of two thousand seventeen, there was Senate Bill twelve sixty-three that was started to be implemented, and I don't know if you guys are familiar with this, but it is a bill that is supposed to help decrease the number of small and sustainable water systems that are forming in California, and it has a couple of aspects. One is that, in order for the county to permit a public water system, they now have to have state approval. We have, we have in about half the states in California, not quite half, but we have what's called local primacy agencies, where the county covers the water systems that are under two hundred connections. And so, Stanislaus County is one of those local primacy agencies. So, for them to be able to follow through with that, I just wanna make sure that you know that we will be working with them to make sure we don't have new public water systems forming, which could be a problem later on down the road for you all. The other thing is just to address the idea of payment. Prop two eighteen is not required for mobile home parks, and so it is a different process than it is for you all to raise rates. And so, one of the issues might be, I can imagine there's concern about the potential for non-payment, but this is a different scenario in that you don't have individual residents, and there are also other things, oop, am I...
You can keep going for a minute.
Okay, thank you, I'll try and speed through. So, there is, they are also under the jurisdiction of the California Housing and Community Development, and so, if there is a problem with payment, you could reach out to them as well. I have seen them in other parts of the state, they have, they can suspend permits, they can require rentals to not be collected, so I have seen other things done. So, we also have consolidation incentives for a disadvantaged water system with an MCL violation, for the city to bring that onboard. We give a ten million dollar zero percent interest loan. So, for instance, you have a new surface water treatment plant that you'd like to put in, or you have a new well you would like to put in, we can work with you if you have brought in a disadvantaged community like them, and we will give you funding for that at zero interest up to ten million dollars, which works out to be about one point eight million dollars, so, in savings, when you look at our normal one point seven percent. So, we're not asking you to pay for this project, we are gonna work with them to either have private funding or funding through us. And, you know, it turns out to be a good payment rate, because they're a hundred and fifty percent, they're outside your service area, works out to be about four hundred thousand dollars in revenue over twenty years, and helps spread the cost of water for your existing customers. And I just, there's also liability protection in our health and safety code that provides liability for the city for these people that have been drinking arsenic contaminated water. So, anyhow, we're here just to provide you whatever information that you want or need to be informed on this. Thank you for your time.
At this time, is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Okay, I'll bring it back. Mr. Wells?
There's any specific questions?
I had a couple of questions. I heard Ms. Frederick numerous times refer to disadvantaged communities. Is it my understanding, isn't this a for-profit organization?
The area, Series, is considered a disadvantaged community, but this particular is a privately-owned mobile home park that operates in a for...
So, the mobile home isn't disadvantaged?
It's in a disadvantaged area.
Well, we, the whole city is.
Correct.
Okay. So, just for clarification of that, I, okay. Any other questions or comments?
I think I could say a couple of things here. You know, one of the things that we're gonna be going on at Surface Water here in the near future, and, you know, we did a deal process with out in the Monterey Track, and, you know, they understand what's gonna be happening. You know, I can't see allowing this at this time, just to be honest with you, that is gonna attack our ratepayers. This is a privately-owned mobile home park, and what if, who would say if the guy sells it, and then what happens? And are they gonna be, would they be metered? Would this mobile home park be metered like everybody else in the city is at this current time?
It was, yeah, it's set up.
Go ahead. And then, you stated that if they don't make payment, then there's a place that we could reach out to, but we don't have the city's time staff to be able to do something like that. You know, even currently right now, I mean, we still have our own water issues here in the city of Series, obviously having to take care of our water. I just see this, I know it was here about a year ago, you talked about there was three other mobile home parks, one is with the city of Modesto, but that doesn't mean the city of Modesto, if they ever had issues with their water, is gonna jump onboard. I would probably say they're not going to, not to speak for their council members. And then, you said that there was another one that has, is closer to, I don't even know which part you said it was, but it had no issues whatsoever. And then, I guess the last question would be, what is the county doing? You know, this was something that was annexed and was sixty years ago, or however many years ago that this place was put there, and it's really a county issue, truly is. But, at the end of the day, I mean, I feel for the people that obviously don't have the clean drinking water, and I feel for the people that live in, obviously maybe not a disadvantaged area, but at the same time too, I just see that it's, you know, at this present time, I just can't support it.
Okay.
Well, I don't see any county involvement at all, and when, you know, and you're talking about two different things when we just did Monterey Track.
Monterey Track Park.
Monterey Track Project, that was, you know, a district, that wasn't privately-owned, that wasn't, you know, a privately-owned for-profit mobile home park, so, and the county was very involved in that, and they went through a whole lot of process, and so we're pretty secure there, if they were to fail, we should be pretty well taken care of with the county also, so.
Go ahead.
And, you know, so, you know, I see the concerns here, but I feel like because we went out, you know, the Monterey, hey, let's catch on to this too, I think it's a lot of that, but again, it's a different concern, and there's other properties right along there, I don't know what kind of problems they're having, you know, is this a transient well out there now that they're drinking out of? Yeah. So, who's called, who called it, the county? Did the county call this water no good anymore for drinking? Who did that?
Yeah, no, I mean, that's a federal level, their arsenic over the maximum, over ten...
Right, but they get it tested, who came out and tested, the county?
No, they, each individual public water system does their own testing, and then we, at the county level and the state level, receive their results, and then...
Okay, so, but it's done that way, right? Somebody, but the county's aware of this?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
The county's not at the table here, though, are they?
I've been working very closely with Rachel.
But the county's not at the table here, right?
Be happy to bring them out.
Anyway, I just, I can't support this.
Yeah, some of the concerns that I have, I agree with you that the situation with the Monterey Track Park project was night and day for this, it was the CSD. One of the significant concerns that this body had was, their track record was that they would default, and we had a long history of showing that. The only way that we would consider it is if the county would backstop it, because, quite frankly, I have forty-seven thousand other residents here that I have to look out for their interests too, who've gone through the annexation process. I mean, the first thing I can say to the mobile home park owner is, go ahead and get an annexation out to you, and then we'll be more than happy to serve you, because we are, in essence, opening up Pandora's Box here, and it was a little bit different when it was a nonprofit, truly a disadvantaged community that needed, this is a for-profit, okay, so...
And we have the same concerns, I mean, when we do funding, we look at both, what is the community status, what are the individual residents making, but then we also look at what do the owners make? I mean, lots, sometimes we have owners that live on the mobile home parks, in which case they are part of the disadvantaged. And so, for our funding sources, we, that will be something that we review, but either way, we wouldn't ask you to fund it.
Well, my concern is, is that we enter in an arrangement, we're stuck holding all the bag, and the owner sells in a year and a half, and now we're dealing with somebody else that doesn't want to take our rate increases that we're gonna have for our surface water project, doesn't want to do anything, and quite frankly, the entire O and M maintenance for the line down to there, how could I ask my residents to pay for the long-term operation and maintenance of that for a line that isn't part of the city? So, I have a number of concerns, and I believe you mentioned that you didn't put in the report, the study of treatment of the well, why not? I would have thought that, I mean...
There is treatment of the wells in the study, they do have treatment of the well.
Point of use is what they didn't study.
What's that?
They studied wellhead treatment, they did not study drilling.
Another, another one.
A new well, and they didn't study the point of use treatment, which would be a treatment at the facility, those are the two options that were discarded. But wellhead treatment was studied, that's the other option.
And why were those discarded?
As I mentioned earlier, the drilling a new well was discarded because of the lack of space in the, in the, in the actual mobile home park, and also because of the likelihood of drilling a new well that would contain arsenic in that general vicinity, because we know arsenic is known to be produced in the groundwater in these areas, so, you know, going with a new well was not a, an option that we thought it would be a good way to put, to spend our money, our efforts on. And point of use, point of entry is a treatment method, but it's a treatment method at... treatment method at each house. So basically, you put at each house, either under the sink, um, one of those under the sink treatment systems where people can get drinking water. But, um, the state, uh, doesn't really approve or allow those, those systems because of the, uh, lack of success of the long-term, you know, it's very difficult to control now forty-seven treatment systems, make sure that they all work appropriately. Most of the time when they stop working, they throw them out and now you, you know, you end up where you started. So point of use, point of entry is only allowed whenever there is no other feasible alternative. So, um, yes, they're not evaluated in the report because, you know, we found that they were just non-feasible alternatives.
Okay, um, and I, I, you know, obviously the, the ship sailed years ago when this project was developed and unfortunately, um, the situation is, is what it is. But the thing that I'm struggling with is, I mean, I hear you said that you don't have the space for the well, but if I take off my hat and say, okay, we have an application for an annexation adjacent to the city, one of our conditions of approval is, you've got to put a well in. Well, that means that that developer has to go buy the property, put the well in, and if it doesn't work there, they've got to try to find some, somewhere else. That's the condition of approval. In this scenario, we're saying, well, we're just going to wipe that away and it's okay. How do I tell the next person that comes along, well, um, you don't have to do that? I, we just have to be fair here in, in, in all the things that we deal with. And we're, we're providing, we would be providing connection outside of our service area to a for-profit organization. That's, that's difficult to justify.
Can I, can I ask you, so if they annexed, if they, if they annexed, would that solve some of the concern?
Oh, if they would annex, we would have to provide them with service, correct.
Okay, I mean, but I don't, at least, correct me if I'm wrong, obviously, you guys know this better than I do, but is the sphere of influence, are they in the sphere of influence right now?
No.
They're not? Okay, so would you guys, I, I'm not an LAFCO expert, I know some things, but, I mean, wouldn't you need to expand your sphere of influence?
It would take a LAFCO annexation and a LAFCO process with Envire, Environmental Impact Report.
Okay, because I mean, we're doing that in other places.
So, so just to put this in perspective, even if we were sitting up here saying, yes, we're willing to do it, you would still have to get LAFCO's approval to do that.
Absolutely, yes, yes, yes.
And again, I know that the Monterey Track Park situation was way different than this. I'm not, I, I don't know how LAFCO would accept this because we have had requests right on our, the edge of our border that have been told no. So for, for, for other, other type projects, not necessarily this. So I, 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 there are some concerns that, that I have. Um, and I, I personally would like to see if they could become self-sufficient on their own as time develops and the city gets closer and we can annex and they can move off of that situation, then, then yes, that's, that's another, um, another option. But, but my concern is, we make the connection, even if they pay for the, the initial line, that's only part of it. The long-term O and M, you know, I can't throw that on my rate payers to pick up the cost. I don't know that they're going to want to have their own special rate tier on top of what we're going to charge them for water to maintain it. Um, and if something happens and it gets damaged, I know what'll happen. We'll get the call, we don't have the water, you've got to come out and fix it, and we're going to look around. And again, I, I, I have to be fair to all of the other residents around here, um, who are making payments to maintain our current water system. So I, I-
You know, we agree with you, we want your current water systems to be supported, but we're just trying to figure out, you know, there's a way to benefit everyone.
Sure. Uh, and I, I, I'm concerned, even if there were only of the eleven, let's just say five others that make this request, then, you know, we could have water systems spidering all outside of our city. And, um, and, and, and it's, in essence, it's really usurping the whole development process that we all have to play by the guidelines on, and, but we're saying, well, we'll just kind of close our eyes to this one and we'll let it happen. So I have a problem with the double standard, um, and nothing against you, but the state's really good in, in, you know, trying to help us out, figure out our problems, so.
Well, and the other thing is, the state also requires us to drill a new well and it doesn't care where, when we have a well, we have to go drill another well. It was Series Unified School District, right up the street. We require them to drill a well and test it before we even considered that process. So, uh, it's, it, it's a challenge when you're having two different bodies of state telling you two different things. Um, and, you know, really at the end of the day, it's a transfer of liability. The, the, the liability now is solely on the owner of that property and, and the connection to the city is transferring that liability to the city, um, and that's a tremendous benefit to that property owner. And does the city want to take that liability on?
Yeah, I, 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 I could be wrong here, but I'd be willing to bet within three to five years that this, if we provide water to this, it will be sold.
Okay, no, I mean, we, you know, it's, I think it's important for us, for being here representing the state to hear what your concerns are and-
I mean, if, if all of those things weren't there, um, I think we've shown in the past that we want to help, um, and, and, and make the situation better. If this was, again, a, a, a CSD that was, you know, nonprofit that the county wa, had, had been dealing with, again, we've, we've been down that path. It was a struggle, but, but the county, the county has agreed to, um, provide twenty years of support and make sure that there is a, a funding bucket or mechanism that if something goes south, so to speak, that the city of Series is not stuck holding the bag, they will come in and make sure that everything is okay. And, and they should, they were the ones that approved it, and this isn't your issue, but from the county side, they're always great at telling us how we screw up on residential development. And, um, this is one case where they haven't, I mean, they approved it, you know, and, and they didn't, they didn't do probably what they should have.
Although I would say that in two thousand and six, the federal regulation changed, it was originally fifty micrograms per liter and it dropped to ten. So that's where they're, that's where they are struggling against it.
Trust me, that's why we have a two hundred million dollar surface water plant that we're looking at.
Yeah, that's what we're looking at, okay.
Because, um, yeah, we, we, we're aware of that situation and, um, and again, so that's my, my comments, I don't know if Councilman Rhino, if you had any-
I don't have anything to add. I would agree wholeheartedly with the rest of the council that we should not approve it at this time.
So, um-
I, yeah, I didn't, are you guys moving on it tonight or?
We, we will take, I, I mean, if one of us makes a, a motion, I'm sure we will.
Thank you for your time.
Sure, thank you. And if, for what is worth the comments, and we, we, we would like to help, we really will, but, but there is just a lot of issues and roadblocks with this one, um, that, uh, you know, with it being a for-profit ownership, that, that, that's really a challenge for us. Because it opens up a lot of other options that, I mean, a question I would have is, where do we draw the line? How, if, if there's, I'm assuming, how many units are in this, in this facility? Forty-seven? Wh, what happens if somebody that has four comes to us?
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I, you know, and maybe it's an issue that we can talk with the county, I'm, maybe they need to be a special district, maybe there are other mechanisms to deal with it. But, but I do think it's important to understand what your concerns are.
Sure, okay.
So, thank you.
I'll be more than happy to meet with you and share more if, if you would like. Okay, any further discussion or action?
What do we need to do here? Just reject it? Just reject item eleven, it's, how do we do this?
Yes, so they made a request to connect to the city of Series and pursue that process. Um, so we do, you can not take action, you can approve their action by minute order, um, which basically set us in a process, or you can deny it with a simple minute action. We refer the minutes that the council has designed this, has denied the application for out-of-boundary service.
Okay, I would move that we will deny the application for the out-of-boundary privileges.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second by Councilmember Rhino? Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Drossit?
Yes.
Councilmember Lane?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
And Mayor Biera?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero one.
Thank you, I almost said no on that one.
I did too. You're saying yes to saying no.
Yes, correct. All right, at this time, is there anyone on the council that would like an item placed on a future agenda? Hearing done, uh, reports? I have nothing to report. Councilmember Rhino?
I have nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilmember Lane?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilmember Drossit?
Nothing.
And Ms. Dean? Tom?
Nothing, Mayor.
Mr. Wells?
Just a reminder, the Centennial Committee is continuing to meet. Our next meeting is tomorrow evening, Tuesday, the eleventh at five P.M. We'll be done in plenty of time for the concerts. Enjoy the, the next concert series, be nice and warm, so bring your cold beverage. Um, I had the privilege this Wednesday of going to Sacramento, my first opportunity to testify at a senate hearing, um, regarding SB three seventy-three, which is Senator Canelo's bill that is in support of using a design-build process for our surface water project. So that'll be an interesting, um, effort that we are thankful for Senator Canelo, as well as Assemblyman Gray, who are co-sponsoring that legislation to allow us and use that, uh, tool for the construction of the surface water plant that was referenced this evening. Uh, just a, a little piece of housekeeping, we did have a closed session item on the, uh, agenda this evening, we will not need that, um, due to some late information, so no need for a closed session this evening. Um, and that's it.
Okay. Tom?
Just letting council know that on the Whitmore Ranch specific plan and the general plan, staff is starting to receive administrative drafts of those documents, and so, um, we're working through those. It's likely that the EIRs and the drafts of those documents will probably be late summer, early fall, um, and then moving through the public hearing process on both those projects.
Okay, a couple of questions for you. Um, what's the timeline for the completion out here on the Fourth Street improvements? Are you going to, did I jump over? Sorry. Darrell?
Yeah, the total projected timeline was three months.
Okay.
So we're already into it, two, three weeks now.
Okay.
Um, we will be, uh, just continuing the electrical conduit work this week, starting with Storm Green next week though, and progressing from there.
Okay. Now I'll jump back to you, Tom, one other question. Are you aware of any recent annexations in LAFCO where someone has done the, um, the, uh, ag mitigation and paid the in-lufi as opposed to assign it to another project?
I am not. Um, I could certainly check in with the LAFCO folks to see if they've had any, but I'm not aware of any.
Yeah, I'm not aware of anything in the last three years, I believe was the last time, the Tivoli, I believe was the last one, uh, in Modesto.
Okay. All right, I didn't know if you were done, Tom?
I'm done.
Okay. Darrell? Mr. Smith?
Sure, I left each of you a twenty sixteen annual report. It's, it's short and sweet, uh, this is next year's, will be probably bigger, given our Centennial Celebration next year, officers have developed a new badge to wear, they'll have on next year for the entire year. And I want to introduce Kenny Taylor, he is our new, um, Code Enforcement Officer. And, uh, there you go, want to put a name to a face, so. Yeah, I go, come on up.
Good evening, members of the council, Kenny Taylor, uh, Code Enforcement Officer, uh, right now filling in for Mr. Frank Alvarez. Um, you know, definitely, you know, happy to be here in Series, you know, coming from Southern California, um, and dealing with a lot of issues here in this community. Um, you know, from property maintenance with residential, you know, commercial, um, and just really being a educator, communicator, uh, investigator, you know, researching, uh, working with various departments, the Health Department, planning, I'm pretty much there every other day, Police Department, um, Public Works, uh, and addressing a lot of i, issues here in this town. Um, but, you know, effective code enforcement, you know, kind of starts with you guys, you know, and acting in ordinance that, um, that will make this community, you know, better, you know, for the future. Um, and just, you know, wanting to have that prosperity. You know, I kind of watched the council meetings before I came to this council meeting on, on YouTube and, you know, I realized that, you know, you guys are trying to seek, you know, you know, revenues, uh, for this community, to make this community a lot better. Um, and, you know, code enforcement, uh, is that tool that can do that. And it's just not issuing out violations or, or admin sites, it's, hey, you know, you need to get your business licenses, you know, you need to go and get your, uh, your, your permit to, to finish your construction for building. Um, you know, you need to get your state license, et cetera. And so, you know, business owners, property owners, you know, they respect that, hey, you know, there's rules and guidelines and there's a reason behind that. Um, and that's, that's part of my everyday job. And, you know, uh, every day here is a challenge, but, you know, hey, it's, it's an opportunity to grow and it's also an opportunity to, you know, to edu, educate the community as I'm doing daily.
Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
So that's all I have.
Okay. Jeremy? Nothing? All right, with that, we will adjourn the meeting to our next regular scheduled meeting, which will be Monday, July twenty-fourth at six P.M. Thank you.